Good evening, last call guys, one more time. If you did not sign in and you're here for the 25-plus recognition, please do so. I'll leave this down by the piano for one last call. If you did not sign in for the 25-plus year recognition that we're doing tonight, please do so. I'll leave this on the piano for another minute or so before we get started, so you still have time. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Board of Education. The Board of Education is interested in encouraging members of the public to share their ideas, comments, and questions. Public participation opportunities will be available at the beginning and the end of this meeting, and as stated in Board policy, no person shall speak for more than three minutes, and each period of public participation will be limited to 30 minutes. If you have any questions or concerns regarding matters on the consent agenda through the items for discussion, items 1 through 4, it may be important for you to utilize the first public participation opportunity. Of course, you may also send your feedback and questions to us through our email account, Questions will be shared with members of the central administrative team, who will respond in a timely fashion. Thank you for your anticipated courtesy and cooperation. In the event of fire and/or if you hear the fire bell, you must leave the building. Please use the nearest exit, which is in the back of the room to the right. And now please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Defendini, may we have your monthly update, please?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Morales, members of the Board of Education. Just a couple of quick items before we get into our celebrating excellence portion of tonight's meeting. For those of you, again, in the community that might not be aware, we congratulated last month Mr. Zakian, our Deputy Superintendent, who will be, this time we're making it official, retiring from our schools this coming June 30th. We wish you well on your post-retirement journey. We also were able to make a recommendation, which is on for this month's meeting, to move Dr. Thompson into the Assistant to the Superintendent position for Administration, and he will begin that tenure track area starting July 1st of this upcoming year. Looking forward to seeing you in that role, Dr. Thompson, which now opens up a human resource position for us again. So that process has started. We actually had the chance this past week to do some screening interviews. We have some more work to do next year. The committee's going to be getting together next week as well, towards the end of the week, in order to review some of the candidates. So we look forward in the coming months to be able to provide a recommendation to the Board of Education to round us back out. So that was item number one. Item number two, the Board of Education approved an opportunity for us to work with a company called EF Tours to study abroad, or to have an opportunity for our students to be able to learn abroad during the February break next year. That process is underway. We are actively in the works of that. We had a really good showing at the parent meeting. Over 110 people were actually at the meeting. We had a number of people sign up and register. We're working through some waitlist-related concerns and other concerns right now, but again, good showing as far as the public's interest, our community's interest, in this opportunity that the Board of Education provided. And the last piece is just a little bit of information. Tomorrow night, we are very pleased to welcome Board of Education, members of the community, parents, to our Parent University, which will be held here. We already have a pretty tremendous showing. Its focus is on math. It is for, from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock here at the middle school. It is K-8 focused, and parents that are interested, they did get a notification via the Parent Link system, can register online so that we can get a feel for how many people are going to be here. But again, current numbers are pretty good at this point, so we're very proud of the work with regard to Parent University and closing those communication lines with our parents. With that being said, I'm going to ask members of the Board of Education to please join us in the front of the stage. Members of Central Admin, our attorney, please jump into the crowd so we can begin the important part of our meeting, which is the celebrating excellence. We turn our attention to the wonderful people in the audience. So just give us one second to get ourselves resituated, and we'll get on. So, good evening, everybody. A few months ago, we began a conversation about the importance of celebrating excellence here in Farmingdale Schools. Far too often, you know, I'm sitting up here as the Superintendent of Schools, trying to do the best I can, proudly describing all of the amazing things and the amazing people that are here in our school district, doing incredible work, whether or not there are incredible students or incredible staff. There was a point in time where we all kind of looked at each other, saying, "Why are we doing this without having the actual people who are doing the incredible work here with us? They should be a part of a public recognition ceremony," which began this idea of celebrating excellence. Again, began a few months ago. We've continued to refine that process. I think we're at a pretty good place right now, and we have a couple of really remarkable students and staff members to celebrate. So I want to start off with our first celebration. For those of you that were piped in last month, you'll know that I celebrated two very special people here who were part of a Heimlich Hero Program. Mrs. Di Piero was actually up on the stage. She was a part of bringing that here. Our health teacher, Allison, was also a big part of bringing that program here to the schools. And if you could possibly believe it, within a very short period of time, we're recognizing a second pair of Heimlich heroes. So on Wednesday, February 15th, 6th grader Mackenzie Anderson saved the life of her classmate, Nisaleen Michelle, by successfully implementing the Heimlich maneuver when she was suddenly choking on her lunch in the cafeteria. She did everything she was trained to do in order to alert people nearby that she could not breathe. We are so grateful that these two students paid such good attention to their health lesson, they just received a few weeks ago in Ms. Pietro Negro's class. At this time, I would like to invite Ms. Di Piero up to introduce our two heroes. Ms. Di Piero?
Hello, everybody. So we joke at Howard that our next health lesson is going to be how to chew your food properly. The first thing I did after finding out that we had a second choking incident was to make sure it wasn't also a mozzarella stick, because I was about to tell our entire cafeteria staff, "No more mozzarella sticks." But this one was a churro, so I don't know what to do. No more cylinder foods. But I have Mackenzie Anderson here. I would like to welcome her to the stage, and I really want to let the Board of Ed members know that this is a true hero. Mackenzie, come on up, please. What's truly amazing is that Mackenzie was sitting on the far side, on the other side of this table, and she really recognized Nisaleen choking, and Nisaleen did everything correct. She did everything we taught her to do. If you're choking, you cannot talk, but she started slapping that table. She started like making all the universal signs that she was choking, and Mackenzie recognized that and came around the table, barged through five other kids that were all trying to help Nisaleen, and she just put her arms around that girl's stomach and did the Heimlich so forcefully that out came the churro, like really, like it's so evident on video. So we're so proud of her and her accomplishments. And if Nisaleen's here, we'd love to recognize her too for really paying attention to her health lessons and coming up here and doing everything correctly. So come on up, Nisaleen, thank you. I know if the roles were reversed, that Nisaleen would have done the same thing, but I'm just so proud of her for listening. You know, when people are choking, sometimes your first reaction is to be embarrassed and hide and run away, and she did not. You really did a great job. So because of Nisaleen, Mackenzie was able to be a hero, so congratulations to both of you, and thank you so much. And that's it, hopefully.
Great job, girls. We are very proud of you both. Our second recognition comes from a very special ceremony that was performed and put on by our Real Harmony Club over at Farmingdale High School, which was conceived a number of years ago in response to the need, or a known need for us, to be able to make sure that we are connecting all of our students with the varied cultures within our school district. So last week, Real Harmony presented their Black History Month event on February 28th, 2023. This annual event celebrates black culture and history. For many weeks, the students used their club time and any spare moment they had to research and learn about famous black icons, historical events, and their significance beyond specific traditions. They worked diligently to choreograph their skits and dances. This past Tuesday, these students proudly presented an array of their performances that displayed the beauty of joy, art, struggle, and pride through the decades. For each event, we see these students passionately pour their hearts into the club's mission to help spread the exploration, respect, and enjoyment of diversity and all it has to offer to our community. I'd like to introduce, at this point in time, our two club advisors. Can Aleah and Cynthia, please come on up to the microphone. They will introduce our students that are a part of the Real Harmony Club, and if I can just for a moment, I had the privilege of being there. I had said this to a couple of different people who were there. The authenticity of what you brought to the stage on that day, the talents that you showcased last week were absolutely outstanding. We are very proud to have you as part of our school here in our schools, and we really, really do appreciate and respect the time you took to put on what was really an unbelievable demonstration for us as to how we can appreciate all the different varieties and things to celebrate through the decades for black culture. So thank you so much for your work last week.
To echo everybody, we are so proud of you guys, and we're happy to celebrate you all.
We'd like to welcome Amaya Johnson to the stage, and Matthew Morell, Mackay Jones, Matthew Morell, Luisa De Leon, Sylviaxis, Faith Williams, Courtney Cameron, Zanya Allen, Shay Jones, Ethan Jones, Isabella Athanasio, and Sarah Aliandro.
So now I'd like to introduce some very special athletes who, over the course of the last month, have proven themselves on the athletic field. The first person that I would like to recognize is in All County Girls Basketball. Leela announced her presence with authority this season and has now been or put everybody on her shoulder, and she is certainly on our radar. A force in the post, she was a matchup nightmare for every team that we played this season. Our strength of schedule was number one in Nassau, as 16 of our 21 games were versus playoff-bound teams. Averaging 13 points, 12 rebounds, and four blocks per game, Leela was a dominant force in the post. She also proved herself to be a tough defensive player and protector of the paint for our team. As a teammate, she is second to none and always makes the team laugh every day. Leela has a smile that is bigger than the gym, and she has a genuine appreciation for when any one of her teammates does well. Any success that team achieved this season would not have been possible without the efforts of Leela. A first-time All County selection, and next year promises to be even better. This time, I would like to invite David Stein and Leela up to the mic, up to the stage, to celebrate All County Girls Basketball recipient. Oh, okay. Stay there, sorry. I'd also like to recognize All County Basketball boys Jake, as a starter, played as a freshman, and then again as a sophomore. Jake averaged 14.7 points per game. He also shot 31 threes this particular year. Whenever the team needed a basket, Jake was the one who always came through. He's on a very, very short list of underclassmen to ever achieve All County honors. At this time, I would like to invite again David Stein, who's up here, or should be back up here if he's not, to formally introduce our All County Basketball recipient, Dave Stein.
All right, Jake Nigel, come on up.
Sorry, can I get Jim Pastere up here? There we go, Coach. I didn't see in the audience, sir. You got to get up here, buddy. Congratulations, Coach. So I'd like to introduce now some of our All County wrestlers. Mike Perez is a 9th grader who was second in the conference tournament and placed sixth in the county at 106 pounds. Eric Wolfe is a 10th grader, team captain, and two times conference finalist. He placed fifth in the county tournament at 138 pounds. And Richard Farah is a senior and a two-time All Conference. He placed fifth in the county tournament at 285 pounds. At this time, I would like to introduce Tim Bellisari to come on up here with his boys for All County Wrestling recipients, Mike Perez, Eric Wolfe, and Richard Farah. And one more. So our All County, I'm sorry, two more. All County Track and Field Senior Kyle Mullin has been a productive member. Kyle clearly brought his fan crew, thank you, boys. Has been a productive member and leader of the Boys Farmingdale Track and Field Team for the past four years. At the Indoor County Championship a few weeks ago, Kyle managed to prove himself yet again as an All County performer in the shot put with a mark of 47 feet, 11 and 3/4 inches, a personal best. Kyle's other career highlights include, in 2022, All County Winter Shot Put New York State Qualifier, MVP Winter 2022, All County Spring 2022, and Most Improved Player Spring of 2022. And 2023, so far, All County Winter 2023, Winter Long Island Elite Meet First Place, and New York State Qualifier 2023 for the shot put. At this time, I would like to invite up Kyle Mullin. Mr. Zakian, we are done with our All County students. I don't know what makes me more proud, Kyle actually accomplishing what he accomplished, or half of the team showing up in support of Kyle. I think that that might speak as much to the Daler heart as the actual accolade itself. So we have other greatness in the room tonight, our varsity competitive cheer team. This year, the varsity competitive cheerleaders have once again made Daler history. This past February, the cheerleading team competed against the best in the nation at the National High School Cheerleading Championship in Orlando, Florida. The team competed in two divisions. They finished as small varsity D1 semifinalists. This was the largest team in the division with 110 teams total, and made it to the finals for the first time ever as a program in the medium varsity game day D1 division, finishing 11th in the nation. Just one week after attending High School Nationals, the varsity cheerleaders beat the undefeated Freeport Red Devils to win the D1 Small County Championship title. This past Saturday, the varsity cheerleaders competed at the New York State Cheerleading Championship in Binghamton, New York. The girls battled through two rounds of competition and came home with an amazing third-play finish. This year's routine was jam-packed with super elite tumbling and stunting skills that brought the crowd to their feet and had everyone chanting "Daler Pride." This is the program's second county championship title in just five short years since the program was established. Out of the four years competing at the varsity level, this is the second time the cheerleaders have qualified for the state championship, and they have finished in the top three both times. Their third time at Nationals and their second time at States. This is a tremendous accomplishment for these athletes, especially with 10 out of the 18 athletes being freshmen. Congratulations to all the varsity cheerleaders for an amazing end to a very successful season, and for the seniors for their high school cheerleading careers. The future is definitely bright for us Dalers in the world of cheerleading. At this time, I'd like to invite Coaches Caitlin Beatrice and Amanda Locata up to introduce their team.
Good evening, everyone. All right, first up, we have Lila Atlas, Gianna Esposito, Reese Gillan, Sadie Gillan, Natalie Cruz, Camille Jacob, Ava Crop.
Shake everyone's hand.
Jasmine Lawrence, Dakota Morrow, Kaylee Mendelson, Brenna Miller, Abby O'Dwyer, Ella Schaffhauser, Juliana Shelley. Juliana Shelley, Sarah Verdi, and Nancy Wolf.
Congratulations, girls. Just a quick bit of housekeeping. So we do realize that the certificates don't have names on them. That's just for simplicity for today's purposes. It does have a PIN. So for my staff, you know how important PINs are to me. It does have a celebrating excellent, everything comes with a PIN in Farmingdale. It does come with a celebrating excellent PIN. We will be sending out the actual formal certificates within the next few days with your names actually on them. So that wasn't a mistake, I promise. So when I turn our attention to our fine and performing arts, we're going to celebrate our all-district orchestra. On Thursday, February 9th, we had our all-district orchestra concert at Farmingdale High School. It was an incredible evening of music featuring the entire orchestra department, including teachers and students from grades 5 through 12. Planning for this large-scale event began more than a year ago, featuring 245 of our string instruments. We had waited three years for this concert to happen, as our last all-district concert was back in February of 2020, when we featured our district choruses before the pandemic began. Our last all-district concert was back in 2018. Concert began with a combined elementary performance with all four elementary schools playing together, then a Howitt Middle School performance combining grades 6 through 8, followed by a high school string, and finally, the symphony orchestra performance, culminating with a huge finality featuring all 245 students playing Beethoven's Ode to Joy all together. The performance ended with a rousing standing ovation. The music department looks forward to next year's all-district concert, which will feature our all-district band. Before I bring everybody up, we actually have a little bit of a special presentation if the board wants to step back. We actually have the performance, which will take a couple of minutes to just show you that final performance of the Ode to Joy. So that is 245 strings, ranging from, you know, new string players who are 11-years-old in 5th grade, all the way through, you know, Robert Baldwin, who's one of our most accomplished string players that we may have ever had in Farmingdale's history, are all on that stage at the same time. That doesn't happen without some incredible teachers. I'd like to introduce Mr. Warnikowski, who can come up and introduce the teachers that were a part of that wonderful performance. Mr. Warnikowski.
Thank you very much. I'd like to first introduce, from our high school, Teres Manino to come on down. Two of our middle school teachers could not be with us this evening, but I would like to introduce them as well, Mr. Matthew Zabo and also Samuel Gelfer. And from our elementary schools, we have Erica Felker from Northside and SEM. From Albany Avenue, Thomas Ustacchio. And from Woodwood Parkway, Tara Cochio.
Unbelievable performance. Thank you so much. And last, but certainly not least, and thank you for everybody's patience. We will now recognize a special milestone for our employees and express our gratitude for those who have been with us for 25 or more years from their original date of hire. Absolutely. Your services to the Farmingdale School District is a direct correlation to the success of our students. Your skills and abilities as a member of this organization, along with your care, your concern, and your commitment, have benefited those you have worked with. We all benefit from your experience and the passion of your work. Thank you all for giving our school community so much of your time and dedication for all of these years. Many of you know, when I first started here as the superintendent, the first thing that I did when I had the opportunity to speak to the whole staff on that first superintendent's conference day was to honor a number of staff members who touched my life when I was a student here in Farmingdale. And they ranged from a custodian over at Salzman East Memorial, who had a tremendous impact on my life when I first began my working career, to the amazing teachers that I came across during my time. This evening, we are recognizing a very large group of some very special people. Before I welcome up Dr. Thompson to introduce those staff members, we asked each of them to take a little bit of time and consider what their time here in Farmingdale has meant. With thanks to Shannon Shaw, Dr. Thompson, and Mrs. Rogers for culminating and pulling together all of this information, we pulled together what I think is an incredible video. You know me, my staff, I am a crier. So the first time I saw this video, tears welled up in my eyes to see the sentiments that you shared about your time here in Farmingdale School District. Without further ado, I'm going to play the presentation before we actually invite you up on stage. You know you are rock stars. You are my rock stars. I couldn't be any more proud to say that I work with every single one of you. I saw some of our grounds guys, some of our custodians, I saw one of our painters here earlier today. Just a fantastic group of people that care a lot about what they do, and we wouldn't be who we are without the incredible people that you are. And I appreciate you and what you do for us very much. I'm going to take a minute to play the presentation, which is going to do far more than I ever possibly could with my words, because they're your words. After 25 years of service, even you, Dr. Spadudo, 25 years of service means nothing when you put in 42 years of service to the Farmingdale School District. This is all part of the dramatic effect. Just stay with us. We don't expect you to be able to read this. This will be on our website, and there will be an eye exam at the end of this. Quintessential Diana Rossi right there. So again, tomorrow, we'll pop that up on our website so that everyone in the community can see that. I'll also... Oh, this song was working for me, Jeff. Keep it... No. We'll also send that out to all mail accounts as well, so that your colleagues can also celebrate you. You didn't have a chance to read them all, but what I can say to you in each of those instances, the same common theme lives through them all. There's one common thread, and it's about people. It's about the love of working with each other as colleagues. It's about a love of working for the parents in this community. It's about the support that you give and that you receive. And most importantly, the common thread through almost every single one of those is a love of working with children and supporting children, and the kind of impact that it has on you when your children leave you and move on to something greater than you could have ever even imagined. So, thank you for your years of service. I'm now going to turn this over to Dr. Thompson to invite each of you up on stage, so we can embarrass you one more time.
Thank you, Mr. Duffendini. And it is about the people. I want to thank the people who supported putting this together. Ms. Mary Rogers, yeah, sure. Ms. Marie LaVisa, and Ms. Shannon Shaw. So, thank you, guys. This was a huge undertaking. And to those of you that have 25-plus years, we'll start with in alphabetical order. By the way, if we miss someone who is here that didn't sign in before the sign-in sheets were taken away, come on over to the podium, please, so I can recognize you publicly. So, first, Jessica Aliandro, come on up. Joan Marie Barthow. Robert Bloom. Rachel Brownard. Jean Buckley. Teresa Busto. Deana Carlucci. Patricia Solano. Eileen Cochran. Rita Sarneki. Ginny Dalton. Sandra Demopolis Raddus. Michelle Fitzpatrick. Karen Foley. Robert Foley. Kathleen Gagin. Paul Gancy. Maureen Gioli. George Golden. Angeline Goldstein. Gary Herman. Seth Hoffman. Tracy Hoffman. James Hughes. Risa Hutner Herrera. Geraldine Janicek. Karen Joyce. Lauren Kopmeyer. Stacy Kushner. Douglas Lang. Holly Lappianna. Stephanie Leslie. Christine Lin Salata. Julia Morano. Cara Martin. William Marzullier. Maureen McHugh. Deborah McKeo. Edward Meyer. Stephanie Newman. Jennifer Olson. Dr. Jennifer Olson. James Pastir. Karen Price. Angelina Randazzo. Mary Rogers. James Edward. Leila Savellis. David Sebastiano. Hillary Siegel. Dr. William Spaduto. Ellen Valling. Michael Vizano. Erica Weisfeldner. And Adriana Wetzel. If there is anyone that we did not get in the sign-in sheets, please come up and let me know. Congratulations. Stacy Greenberg. Oh, my God, I'm sorry. No, it's at the bottom. I flipped too soon. Congratulations, Stacy. It's awesome. Good synergy in March, you need it. If you can't see the camera, the camera can't see you. Make sure the camera can see you. Congratulations, everybody.
Thank you again, everybody. We are going to get started with our regular meeting. So, anybody that was recognized, thank you again so much for all that you do for us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Defendini. It is a true privilege for us to be here as board members in this fantastic community. There's so much to celebrate here in Farmingdale, and I'm glad we were able to do this every month. So thank you and congratulations to all of our wonderful, excellent recipients for this month. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting for our first public participation session. Please be sure, as always, to clearly state your name and address when you come to the microphone. And of course, please note that you will have three minutes to speak, and there'll be a timer here directly in front of the microphone.
Hey, guys. Eric Morrow, 25 Dale Drive. Haven't seen you in a little while. I've said this before, but I'm gonna say it again. I'm not trying to be a killjoy. My daughter was here, and thank you for recognizing them, at least on the agenda ahead of time. You should be telling parents. I've watched, I mean, this place was packed, and now we have no one here for the real portion of the Board of Ed meeting. And it's kind of insane that this many people left. And, you know, in a party, and I get it, 25 years, and cheer and everything, but there should be something on the agenda ahead of time that tells us when we could show up, or start earlier, or do it a different day. But this is exhausting to have to sit through all that and start our Board of Ed meeting at 9:15. So that's just one. But again, not that I'm killjoying, I think we should recognize all the good things. But we should maybe figure out a way to do it where it's more transparent for the rest of the community so we could handle these other issues before my two minutes. And then, not to take a big lap, but it's gonna sound that way, so please, I'm not saying it that way. Over three years I've been here, I've warned the board of, hey, the masks don't work, and let's not, let's worry about the vaccine. And I've gotten a lot of response, and it's either, well, it's tied to state funding, it's this, that, and the other thing. Well, now they've come out with, I mean, 10 truths, or 10 COVID myths being debunked, masks being one of them, as we know. So I just want to caution that I've said this before, and I'm gonna say it again. In East Meadow tonight, they have a news crew, they have hidden stuff on Project Veritas. Check it out. I would get our ducks in a row. I would make sure that what we're saying publicly is not being done privately or being said. I don't think it is. I personally am a huge believer in this Farmingdale community and what we're trying to do with our students. But I would make sure as the board and the superintendents of this school district that we don't wind up with a descendant media crew, News 12, NBC, ABC, because it happens quick. And as you can tell, Project Veritas has 15 cameras in East Meadow tonight. And I know because I'm being sent the videos and what's going on. And it's a show that's insane. So let's get our ducks in a row, let's get this town in order, and let's make sure that what we're saying publicly about CRT and DEI and everything that we're trying to do, that we're not doing it under the table somehow, some rogue teacher or rogue, you know, anybody. So that's my piece. Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow.
Good evening. Parsa Kareemee, address on file. Following the board's advice, my wife had emailed our son's teacher about a video that was shown to our 11-year-old in the civic engagement class. We were inquiring about the video that was shown to our son. This email was unanswered because the principal advised us that he told the teacher not to answer the email. So my wife and I scheduled an appointment to sit down and speak with our son's teacher and the principal about the civic engagement course. This course was slid into the curriculum without parents' consent under the science enrichment course. During this meeting, my wife and I were expecting to have the teacher join us, but we were denied to speak with her after a dozen requests. The principal cited reasons such as the teacher being new and nervous. Further request to gain information about the author of the video that was shown, who is a poet that champions critical race theory, led to a meeting with the head of curriculum. She reluctantly told me that there were three members of her staff that contributed content to the civic engagement course. I requested to know who these individuals were, that were sending content such as poems by people who champion critical race theory to be approved. When I requested this, I was told flat out, no, we will not tell you who those people are. Another 45-minute meeting with the superintendent and the head of curriculum was held, and yet I was still denied the right to know who was involved in sending content to be taught to my child. Other works by this poet include "Ode to the Only Black Boy in Class", as well as poems that tell young black boys that they'll be shot by the police. Can you, the board, who so strongly last year sat beside me and stated that CRT is not being taught in Farmingdale, and if it were come down to Pike, we would stop it, can you explain the following? How parents were deliberately kept in the dark about the civic engagement course, and it was slid into the science enrichment class? How a poem by someone who was in such favor of CRT gets to be taught to an 11-year-old class? And by the way, when I asked about it, they said, it's the combat bullying. In all the videos, in all the internet, this is the one that we found. That as soon as I watched the video, I thought, this sounds like critical race theory. I typed in the author's name, wrote "Critical Race Theory", and got a whole slew of other poems written by him that champion critical race theory, contributing to the 1619 Project, on and on and on. This is the only thing we found, in all of our searches. And finally, how can school administrators deny a parent's right to know and identify and speak with possibly the individuals responsible for creating and bringing in content to be taught to their children? We always get told about how transparent Farmingdale is, but how three different emails and, three different meetings and numerous emails led to me being told flat out, no, we won't tell you. If you can explain those three things, I'd really appreciate it.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Kareemee. I was a part of some of those meetings, so I can speak on behalf of some of what it is that you were sharing. The first had to do with parents being kept in the dark about the building of curriculum. Again, there was never our intention to keep anybody in the dark. The classes that we've had surrounding civic engagement have been part of open house, they've been part of plenty of opportunities for parents to be able to connect with the teachers that are actually teaching that curriculum. It is, it is a part of our basic coursework, and again, we've made significant efforts going forward to even put our curriculum up on the district's website to make sure that they are in full view of the community so that parents have access to actually see the curriculum that's being taught within our classrooms. There's no doubt, more can always be done in order to make sure that we connect and round back out with parents so that they know what it is that's being taught. But I can assure you that the district is making every effort to make those kinds of connections with parents. And again, one of the biggest initiatives that was one of the board goals for this year is a forward-facing curricular plan. Dr. Olson, a few months ago, laid out that plan and how parents can have access to that. We're continuing to build upon that, and we do believe within the not-too-distant future, all grades, grades K through 12, and all of our curricular areas will be available. It's not something that we are trying to hide, and we have engaged you in conversation surrounding it. As far as the video, we did have a conversation about that, too. I understand full well your concern surrounding the video and some of the content that was in that video. We also spoke about the intentionality of the program and the purpose behind what it is that was trying to be communicated in that video. That specific video was chosen because of the fact that there were great atrocities that had occurred over the years because of the fact that people who see something that they're not proud of don't say anything. Historically, there have been a lot of tragedies that have occurred in our world. That's why that video was specifically chosen. It was trying to address to students, or to try to indicate to students the importance associated with connecting with the fact that if I don't step up and do something, then something bad can really happen. That was the purpose of the intentionality behind the video. We did communicate with you that that video obviously did have an edge to it. We don't disagree with that. We would certainly look at that down the line, but again, the intentionality behind it and what the kids were actually watching in class was not connected to any of the other authors', other videos that you spoke about. The third part is denying a response. We were pretty clear at that point that we would never deny a parent a response. We're just directing you to the appropriate person to get the response. So in certain instances, if you have an issue with regard to something that's going on with regard to what's the classroom setting, meaning something that occurred in a classroom, teacher is the absolute right source to go to. You want to go to the teacher, the teacher's gonna be the person who's gonna be able to best respond to your questions about an incident that occurs in class. If you have an issue pertaining to curriculum, you would go to one of our directors who would be able to talk you through whatever the issues are pertaining to your questions on curriculum. Administration has the final say with regard to approving curriculum. So indicating who might have been a part of that at some point, knowing there could have been a ton of hands on it, didn't really serve its purpose. We would never hide from you why we're asking, or why we picked a particular curriculum, or why material was added to the curriculum. We are right here to answer that question. All we were trying to say to you was, we would be those people who you would go to. We felt that that was very leaderally of us to step up and stand in and say, if you have hard questions, we're right here. Ask us those questions. We don't need to involve our teachers in those particular instances. They would be brought in with regard to the teaching of the curriculum. And you go to the building administration if you have concerns with regard to what's going on in the building. We tried to direct you to the person who would be best able to answer your questions. Again, I know that that's probably not to your satisfaction, but I just wanted to make sure that we were able to have that dialogue here, and people were able to hear the other side of our conversation.
Tom Alessandro, address on file. As you know, board, I've, we've been exchanging emails for quite a few months, trying to get some answers to some, what I think are basic questions. Your last response to me was very disappointing. It just kind of says, well, we've already answered your questions, when in fact, you did not. I'm hoping that you could shed some light, or really point to where you've answered, or just answer the question. One of the questions that I think remains unanswered was, as you noted in a full board, as noted in a full board meeting, at Farmingdale School District, was encouraging students to go to websites to join a chat room with adult strangers. The website was included on certain posters and stickers that were hung up around the school. And want to know why there wasn't a stranger danger letter sent home as some connections may have already been made between some students and adult strangers. Students may have thought it was a safe place to visit since the school was providing them with the website, as far as signage on the walls. All the while, the parents may be totally unaware that their child made some kind of connection. The potential connection of students with adult strangers should trigger a stranger danger letter to be sent home. While you have answered that you will not be sending a stranger danger letter home in this situation, you have not explained why not. So my question is simply, why wouldn't you not send home a stranger danger letter in this situation? Second question that remains unanswered is when this website was brought to your attention by a parent, you did put a new policy in place that requires any posters or signs from outside sources to go, that do go up in the hallways and classrooms, to be approved. I was glad to see that you were able to recognize the problem with pointing children to the website to meet adults and set this new standard. However, the signs that made you put this policy in place are still cropping up in classrooms, as well as other politically motivated signs. What is being done to enforce this protocol, since it is clearly not working and does not seem to be enforced until a parent brings it to your attention? Again, I think these kind of speak to the transparency that's needed, so if you could please provide answers to those.
So sure, I can respond to the two questions. I think Mr. Morales could probably respond to the email back and forth that's been transpiring between you and members of the Board of Education. We send stranger danger letters when in fact, we have an absolutely known circumstance, when a child was exposed to, or when, in a certain instance, a parent reported to the police, the authorities, a building administrator, that there was a specific circumstance. We saw this particular encounter. It's not based upon hearsay, it's not based upon an assumption. It's based upon a very specific circumstance where there was an incident that occurred that we have to make everybody else aware about. There was no incident based upon your commentary there and the website in question where we were no, where there was any specific known instance of a circumstance that occurred that we would have to make that particular warning. It's based upon the potential that something could have, but nothing in fact ever did. And that's why we send out stranger danger letters, is when there's that moment where there was a particular interaction that would cause us some level of concern, and therefore, we would send out a stranger danger letter. And the signs and posters, the building principal's responsible for signs and posters that are within their buildings. So we have protocols in place at each of our buildings to make sure that there's an authorization process now about signs and posters that occur in the, that are shown in the hallways and other open spaces. In the instance of a teacher's classroom, again, if you have a concern with regard to something that's in the classroom, you could certainly bring it up with that respective teacher or building administrator. We would certainly respond in those instances to any concerns that you may have. But again, we believe that it's, again, you'll have a chance, Mr. Alessandro, at the next three-minute meeting, the next three-minute spot. You will have the opportunity at some point, you will have the next three minutes. There'll be another three-minute public participation at the end of the meeting.
Mr. Alessandro, you can't speak anymore. Sorry, your three minutes are up. You can come up at the second public participation session.
Again, I would just reiterate that, again, if you have a concern with regard to a sign or a poster that's in a hallway, 100%, you can give the building principal a call. If you have a concern with regard to something that's going on inside of a teacher's classroom, you could certainly speak to that teacher. We don't have a plan at this point in time in order to regulate in the instances of, you know, a particular percentage. I think you're referring to a certain percentage should be controlled by the district, and a certain percentage should be controlled by the teacher. We don't have those kinds of protocols. We do have protocols in place based upon bias and making sure that political bias is kept out of our classrooms. If you have concerns about some of that stuff, again, you could certainly call the building principal or the teacher in question, and they'll help respond to those issues.
Mike Sewolski, 11 Wallen Court. I was going through the 2023-2024 Curriculum Guide. My daughter's gonna be going into high school next year, and she's possibly interested in swimming. I'm curious to know, is that held at the beginning of the day, the end of the day? And will they be getting bused from the high school to Howard for swimming?
Do you have any other questions? Mike, I want to make sure you get all your questions in before we address them.
I do, but it'll be off of that if you want to address that, and then I'll go into the next one, if that's okay.
Just ask the next one. I don't have a response that I can give you on spot. We're gonna have to look at that and call you back.
All right. So as far as the high school pool, what is being done about that? Right now, I guess we're funding two pools to be running, paying for chlorine, electric, for the aquatic center, and for the high school pool. It kind of seems like a waste of money, considering my son wrestles, and he had to turn in his singlet that he used all season, which is nasty, for the next wrestling team to use. Is there a reason why we have to turn that equipment in when we're paying for two pools, which we shouldn't be?
So I'll respond to the pool question. I think that that's the, right? That's the essence of your question, Mr. Sewolski?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So the second pool is still at Farmingdale High School, kept operational. Our plan out of the gate was until we made sure that we had a real good feel on the first pool, or the new pool, having its intended effect. There were no other issues with regard to it. Obviously, it's a new facility. We thought that things could transpire, or it could go down at a point, that we certainly didn't want to have no place for our students, as we worked out some of the initial bugs. When you open up any new facility, there's the potential to have some bugs. Plan was always to keep it active for the remainder of the year, which is what our plan is. We are offsetting a lot of those costs because we are renting the facility out to other outside organizations who are paying us for the use of the facility. the use of the facility to create a more break-even environment as far as the cost of the pool and the amount of revenue that we're collecting for the use of the pool during that period of time. But we do have a plan at the end of this school year to remove the pool permanently over at Farmingdale High School and replace it with tennis courts that will be going back in, which is the rounding right back out to the beginning portion of the project. And we took the tennis courts out to start this whole train many years ago when we started the project.
Okay. As far as kids having to turn in their thirty-dollar singlets, is there a reason why we do that and don't just let them use them for the rest of their high school wrestling career?
I don't know if Mr. Zakin can respond. I can't respond to that right now. I'd have to get back to you on that one.
Yeah, honestly, we don't give out school athletic uniforms for them to keep. The uniforms do get expensive. I understand your point about using a wrestling singlet for the duration of the year and it's low cost, but to set a precedent to have a uniform that's thirty dollars versus a basketball uniform that's a hundred and twenty dollars versus a football uniform that could be two hundred dollars, we don't, we recycle them. We get them sent out professionally, they're cleaned, dry cleaned, stored, and reuse the next year. They get checked if there's something wrong with them, holes or they're damaged, they get withdrawn, and we replace them with new ones. But we don't give district-wide funds by supporting the children, giving them equipment to keep permanently. It's part of the district. We give it to them, we get it back at the conclusion of the year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. This time, I call for motion to approve the February eighth board minutes.
I make a motion, excuse me, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the February eighth, 2023, regular meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
I call for motion to approve the February twenty-seven board minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the February twenty-seventh, 2023, special meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mrs. Rogers, have we received any correspondence this month?
Yes, actually, there were a couple of emails that came in this month. Two were related to recess time. There was a request that the second Muslim holiday be added to the school calendar, and then there was a request for information regarding high school senior commemorations, meaning, you know, signs and things that go on the lawns at the high school.
Thank you, Mrs. Rogers. Are there any committee reports from the board?
I'm going to just, really quick, Suzanne and Mike and Cherie and myself attended the elementary school fifth grade Green and White Night. We had so much fun watching the kids just running around and being together and just having a fun time. I mean, it was a great, a great night. The kids all had fun. It looked like the parents had fun, they got them involved. I think the white team ended up being the winners at the end, if I read correctly. But it was really exciting for me because I went to Woodard Parkway a few years ago, and we used to do things like that, and it was so nice to see something come full circle. And like I said, parents, teachers, administrators, it really was a very exciting night for the kids, and it was for everybody. And I think what was really nice to see is regardless of a child's athletic ability, they were being coached upon and screamed for and just really appreciated for their efforts. And you could see for some of the kids, they really struggled. It was really hard for them. For some, it was overwhelming. Some didn't feel they did as good as they could. But the other kids on the team, which were not necessarily their classmates, you know, still went over and patted them on the back and congratulated them for their efforts. And again, I love to see that. I'd love to see more of that. And, you know, the innocence of a child. Everybody came together and just had fun, and it was really just a great night to see everybody together. And a lot of kids got to meet new kids, and they'll all be together next year when they come up here to Howitt. And again, so thank you to everybody to put that together and everybody who participated. It was a lot of screaming for two hours, but it was all good screaming, and it really was, it was a great night. So thank you to everybody for that. And Cherie and I even got to do the Macarena, so we enjoyed ourselves. So thank you for that.
Good evening. I just wanted to remind everyone who have seniors at the high school or know of seniors at the high school, the Farmingdale Youth Council Community Service Based Scholarship is due on this coming Monday on March thirteenth, so if they can, are filling out the application, please remind them that they're due on Monday. Then we'll take a look at them, the board, and pick two applicants, each thousand dollars for their community-based activities. So good luck to everyone who put their papers in or who are going to. Just please do it by Monday if you can. Thank you very much.
Just to round it up, we had the Real Harmony Club here earlier this evening, and the show that they put on, Cherie, Suzanne, and I were there for the show. It was truly amazing. It was enlightening. It was fun. It was entertaining. There was one young guy who did a great Michael Jackson impression, including the dancing. And while I was a little disappointed they didn't do a Prince number, I was very happy to be there and to see the children really do a great job of enlightening us about what's important in this country and the history of this country. And they just, they just did a really, really fantastic job. Sorry they're not here to hear this, but they did a great job, and we really appreciated the effort that they put in from the production to the singing to the dancing. It was just really top-notch and very informative. Any other board committee reports? No? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of items one A through G, two A through B, and three A through D be approved as a whole with action recorded separately.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Zakin, I understand we have some policies under review.
We do. Thank you and good evening. We have one draft policy and its corresponding regulation, fifty-twenty-point-three, the rights of students with disabilities under section five oh four. This new policy and its corresponding regulation comes to us from the New York State School Boards Association, as well as the recommendation from our legal counsel at Gersio and Gersio. It has also been vetted by the policy committee. Our current policy, oh-one-hundred, which is non-discrimination and equal opportunity, addresses the five oh four rehabilitation act of nineteen seventy-three. However, it only addresses discrimination against students with a five oh four, similar to preventing discrimination based on race, religion, gender, et cetera. Policy oh-one-hundred does not meet the regulations regarding identification, evaluation, or educational placement of students with a five oh four. By including this new policy in the district book, we will address those needs, as well as establish additional protection for students with a five oh four, and most importantly, provide them with a formal grievance procedure. With this policy in place, the district will now meet the federal requirements that a district are held to in regards to establishing and implementing procedural safeguards that include notice, an opportunity for parents to review relevant records, an impartial hearing process, with an opportunity for participation by the student's parents, representation by council, and a formal appeal procedure. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have at this time regarding this policy.
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you. I report back to the policy committee, and we will have it on the April fourth agenda. Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Zakin. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting for our second public participation session. Again, as always, be sure to clearly state your name and address when you come to the mic, and please note that the time clock, which will be to your left, will be set for three minutes. Thank you.
Mike Swolski, 11, while in court. Mr. Zakin, if I could direct this question to you, we were talking about the wrestling uniforms getting dry cleaned. What's the cost factor to dry clean the uniform as opposed to purchasing the ones if you have that?
I honestly don't have that. It's something that we do for all of our uniforms. Obviously, some of our uniforms get more wear and tear. Maybe think of a more contact sport.
Yeah.
Or a sport like baseball with sliding, and there's some stitching that needs to be done in the legs. So things that are reconditioned is really what they call them, and we send that out, plus the equipment. But any cloth that is damaged, we do discard. But we can't give it as a gift of public fund by distributing it to the athletes. So we take it all back, we review it, we look at it. If it needs to be discarded, we discard it. Possibly sometimes we recycle them and use them as safety gear for practices, that type of thing. But I can't tell you the exact cost of the specific rehabilitation for the wrestling uniforms. If you want me to get that for you, I'd be happy to try to find out for you.
If you could, please, because I think it's probably costing us more money to clean them than it would be to just get new ones.
Okay. It'll take me a little while, only because I don't know if the expense is labeled as wrestling, or if it's kind of all under the reconditioning budget that we use for all of our gear. But I'll get that for you.
Thank you.
Sure.
The next thing I was going to say was maybe instead of tennis courts, we need to look into pickleball courts. That seems to be the up-and-coming thing.
So we're on it. So we're on, we're on pickleball already, so you can, you can use dual purpose. We already had our architects design it so that it could be used for dual purpose, because yeah, community seems to be all over the pickleball world, too. You're welcome.
Tom Alessandro, address on file. Regarding the stranger danger letters that you guys are not going to send home, again, you know, what I heard, Mr. Stefanini, you say was that you want to wait for an incident to happen. I'm saying why we have to wait for an incident to actually happen. Let's be proactive. You know, leadership is being proactive and, but you guys run the schools, and that was your decision, so there's nothing else I can say about that. Regarding the, the other thing, you know, about the schools, about the hanging up of the signs and stuff, you know, I'm telling you that what's in place is not working. Your response back to me is just to keep doing it. It's not our job, the parents' job, to police the classrooms. My point is that what's going on is not working, so again, it's up for you guys to try to come up with something different, that we're not seeing different signs pop up here and there all the time and only gets removed when a parent is mentioning it to you. That's it.
Hi, Mr. Alessandro. I don't want you to walk away thinking that we're waiting for something to happen. We have no belief or understanding that our students were in harm as a result of that particular website or other particular websites. It's not a matter of the fact that we are waiting for something to happen. We don't believe in that particular instance that something could have or would have transpired. Is there always the potential that a circumstance could creep up or a kid could connect with something on the internet, whether or not here at school or at home? Yes. But we don't believe, again, that there was a specific instance in question that would have caused us that level of concern. There was no incident that was reported. There was no circumstance under which it would draw our attention specifically to that, to say, that is an instance in which we really need to follow up with that, because we did note the fact that there's a specific reason to be concerned. I get the fact that that's not the answer that you're looking for, but I just wanted to make sure that you didn't walk away thinking, we wait for something to happen before we step in. We don't do that. That's not, that's not part of our protocol.
Would anyone else like to come up to the mic? Okay, thank everybody for your participation this evening. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for coming out this evening, and have a good night, everybody.